In the meeting, I have a chair coming. So, good morning. This is the Land Use Public Hearing in Queens Borough Hall. If you wish to testify on any items, please fill in a speaking request form for each item. Please indicate the calendar number from the item you wish to speak, whether you're for or against the item, and if you're speaking as a representative, or a member, or a group. The public hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the zoning action proposed, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be opened to public speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes. Three minutes. A bell will be sounded when three minutes has passed. Thank you, Libby. Identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are large numbers of speakers on any particular item, they may be put on second call. Speakers for or against the item that may also be called -- speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. In addition, if you have heard the testimony that you are going to give and want to say, "Hey, I agree with that person," please mark me down for that so that you don't have to additionally testify. We're happy to do that, keep a record of who you are, and make an acknowledgement that that number of people have testified either for or against them at the same time. So, having said that, we expect you to follow the rules. I know it's a crowded room. I am a very big sticker for how we run a meeting, just so you know, and we appreciate everyone's cooperation. Please listen, start.
Calendar items number nine and 10 are related items. U-Lat number C-060432, B and Q, and U-Lat number N-180281, D R Q. We expect the community board, this community board number 11, the applicant is Ackerman LLP. Ackerman.
All the applicants outside? You don't want to hang out here?
[laughing]
Huh? Sorry. All right, we're going to do some other items quickly because probably my fault, which is that they thought they were later in the calendar. I was trying to make it easier for everyone. Apparently, I made it harder. So, let's do another item first so that we can go on. Eric Paladnik, you're in luck. You're in luck.
Thank you.
Item number?
Item number, calendar item number one, VSA number 28552BZ, the applicant is Ackerman LLP, affected community board number one. I think we're already down the process of Ackerman LLC for the applicant. This is just an extension of term, an amendment application for a oil gas station, which is in Astoria, Queens. It's on 34th -- it's on the intersection corner, intersection of 34th Avenue and 31st Street. This site has been under VSA jurisdiction since 1952 because it's located in an archived zoning district. As I mentioned, this is an extension of term of a previously granted variance, and it's been requested an additional term of 10 years, which expired on October 21st, 2017. The amendment is to permit the conversion of the existing building, which currently has a convenience store and it has automotive service station, to just a full convenience store. So, they're getting rid of the automotive service station, but keeping the gas station portion. The last grant was December 6, 2011, was granted, an extension of term for the variance for additional 10 years, which actually expires 2017. The premises improved with a one-story building with approximately 1,204 feet of floor area and two gasoline pumps, and it matches the board's previously approved plans, and the automotive service station's goal is in operation, and it operates according to the previously approved condition, hours of operation, 8:00 VAM to 5:30. So, they're going to amend it. They're going to close down the gas stations a little bit. While they do, they propose construction to just extend the convenience store.
So, it's now a convenience store and a gas station and an auto repair shop. You can nobody to auto repair shop and enlarge the convenience center for keeping the gas pumps?
Exactly, and it's the same exact building.
And it's another 10 years due, at least you already had 10 years.
It's expired 2017.
The community board voted 38 to 0 in your favor. Okay. Are you going to upgrade the gas pumps while you're doing this?
I'm actually not aware of that. The gas pumps will remain open. It's just a floor that's not going to remain.
They might want to consider, your clients might want to consider, I want to actually pay guys on it, but while you're doing all of that, a lot of the gas pumps in the buildings are quite old and quite, you know, just a little fashioned, and so they might want to consider upgrading the pumps all the way. But you're not enlarging the equipment?
No, no, it's the same thing. It's just interior renovations and closing up for the automotive service station in 30 days.
How long would construction take about?
I don't, I don't remember, but as soon as they get the grant, they will be working on it.
Can you be a say variant?
Maybe I say variant, no, that's an exception. And we're not.
Because they want to make sure they're getting the extension before they actually investigate. Okay. So, just to be fair, just let us know how long it'll be closed, any other issues? Thank you very much for your time. Now, it is closed. No speakers, phones closed. Next item?
Calendar item number two, VSA number 11553BZ, the applicant Eric Paladnik TC, affected community board number 4B.
Mr. Paladnik has said he speaks back.
Oh, I can speak like that guy in the FedEx commercial from years ago. Good morning, sorry you're all here this morning listening to me instead of what you're here for. 25202 Union Turnpike, an existing British Petroleum gas station, has been there since the 1950s, corner of Little Neck Parkway, everybody's argument, community board 13, where the application was supported. We're here to renew the term. There's absolutely no change to the site. You'll still get the same great gas, every pump's have been upgraded recently, and there's a canopy overhead, so if it's raining out, you won't get wet. Nothing's electric yet, but we're careful. There's an entire application, it is very well received by the community board.
Okay, there's no change, another 10 years, is there?
Another 10 years, it's a request, it expired on July 11th, 2018, and it's located within a commercial district, just operating with an ESA approval, it's a C22 zoning district.
Questions? All right, I see it was 385 to 0 with the community board, so thank you very much. No speakers? Items closed. Next item?
Calendar item number three, VSA number 2018140BZ, the applicant Eric Paladnik TC, affected community board number 10.
Which property address you calling? Because your calendar number three is 303.
103 North Conduit.
103 North Conduit Avenue. 103 North Conduit Avenue is an application you've already heard, an application for a special permit for a gas station. It was a subject to be also simultaneous sister rezoning application, which you heard last month. This application is simply basically procedural, the same exact building. The site plan has been slightly modified, it's requested and made at community board today to move the canopy on the building structure back from the street line by a few feet. Otherwise, it remains unchanged from the application you heard a few months ago, a few weeks ago, excuse me. And this is the ESA component of it, which is a special permit to allow the gas station to occupy the site.
My understanding is that you have a restricted community board or restricted deck office that allows the building of hotel?
Correct, and that restricted declaration is running with the city planning application, which is the rezoning, which actually city planning heard it last two weeks ago as well, and that will be attached to that document, the restricted declaration.
And what about the conditions of the board? The canopy being set back, the convenience stores should be set back?
Yes, that's what I just mentioned a moment ago, that we appeared at community board 10 two weeks ago also, at which point we presented modified plans, which are slightly different than the plans we presented to you at the last hearing, where we set the canopy and the building structure back an additional five to 12 feet back from the building.
Do you have the restricted deck draft?
There is a draft, restricted declaration, and what happened is it was a copy to you, with this application is also unattached.
What was the vote, speaker?
Very strong in support.
28 to 0. You seem to be having a great conversation.
We're spending a lot of time, well, it's years, as you know, doing this. We spend a lot of time with the community.
Okay, we appreciate it. No speakers? The items closed. All right. We are ready for the Douglass and Parkway item again. Again, we had originally felt this would be later in the calendar, which is why we need to convince the set it up.
Returning to our agenda, calendar item number nine, U-Lat number C-060432, B and Q, and calendar item number 10, related, U-Lat number N-18028, D R Q, affected community board number 11.
Same name for the record, and will you plan the project?
Good morning, Lisa Orantia from Ackerman LLP, the Land Use Determinies for the applicant. So, this is an application for rezoning and--
I think you need to pick the microphone up. Just twist it up. Just to hear voices.
So, is that, is that better?
Not working. I think we need to raise your volume sometimes. Is it on?
Now, it's on.
Everything very good?
So, this is an application for rezoning, and it proposes to rezone all or portions of six tax lots in Douglasston, Queens. And it also proposes to designate the rezoning area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area for affordable housing. There are two proposed development sites in the rezoning area, and you see renderings for both on this cover sheet. The first is at the corner of Northern Boulevard in Douglasston Parkway, and the second is mid-block on Douglasston Parkway. This is an image of the rezoning area. You see that's on the northern side of Alley Pond Park there, sorry, the eastern side. And again, it's at the intersection of Douglasston Parkway and Northern Boulevard. You see outlined in red the two development sites. Here's the zoning map that shows the existing zoning designation as R12, and the proposal is to rezone to R6A, and for the corner lot, R6A with a C12 overlay, commercial overlay. Here's the area map that shows you the existing land uses in the area, and for the area that's rezoned, it's proposed to be designated R6A, which more closely follows the existing built environment. So, within the proposed rezoning area, we have two seven-story buildings and one six-story building, and under the new zoning designation, they will come into closer compliance in terms of use, in terms of bulk. Those buildings exceed height limitations, floor area limitations, and yard restrictions. Also, on this page, you see that the proposed commercial overlay on the corner will match the commercial overlay across the street on Douglasston Boulevard. And there's also a commercial area further to the north that's also C12. These are the existing site conditions photos of the site, so here you see the corner lot.
Guys, just so you know, not here. Just so you know. Okay? I don't know what's so funny, but really, this is a formal meeting, and we want to actually create the formality of it and continue with that.
So, this is lot 39, and this is the proposed R6A with a C12 overlay, and the commercial use will be appropriate for the more heavily traffic, Northern Boulevard. Right now, it's improved with a one-story, one-story auto service station that's not currently in use. This is the, along Douglasston Parkway, you see the remaining portion of the rezoning area. Here's the development site, lot 25, which is currently vacant, and in between two mid-rise apartment buildings. More photos of that area. Again, here are the two renderings of the proposed buildings. So, you have a five-story mixed-use building on lot 39 that's on the left, and a proposed eight-story building on lot 25, a portion of lot 25. And that apartment building will be eight stories tall, but after six floors, there's a 10-foot setback. Just to summarize the zoning actions again, it's a rezoning of all or portions of six tax lots from R12 to R6A, and then the C12 overlay, lot 39, and the tax amendment is to designate the MIH area. The zoning change map just shows you again which portions we're proposing to rezone. The MIH map. This is the administering agency management company that will manage the marketing of the property. It's proposed that the inclusionary housing units will be for seniors age 62 and older. The remaining residential units will be marketed to people age 55 and over.
Can I just interrupt? I see people taking pictures. Can we just get the, the, the slides so that we can distribute them wherever wants to?
Sure.
So, that way, you can just have them, right?
Email it over.
Yeah, so we'll email it over, and then Irving's email address is ipoy@pleasevp.org, so if you want copies, listen.
So, this is a rendering of the construction of the five-story building, mixed-use building. It'll have ground floor commercial, and it's going to, has 59 residential dwelling units, and 20 of those, about 20 of those units will be dedicated to affordable housing. The building will also include 89 accessory attendant parking spaces for both the residential use and the commercial use. There's a site plan showing the proposed building. Slides will include zoning analysis, so you can review that. This is another rendering of the elevation of the proposed building, the corner building. This is the second development site, so new eight-story building. It'll have 24 dwelling units, and it includes 14 affordable units. Also, in the building will be 19 accessory attendant parking spaces. Slides include elevations for both properties. And this is just a slide summarizing the proposed developments. We're going to have 59 residential units in the quarter building, 24 in the mid-block building. They will both include affordable housing units, and all units again will be marketed to seniors age 55 and over. In sum, the proposed rezoning won't encourage more development in the area. It'll, it'll preserve the existing character because existing use and bulk conditions more closely match the R6A zoning district than they do R12, and it'll allow for development fitting to the character of the neighborhood by these two buildings that are roughly the same height as the existing buildings around them.
Anything else? Okay, so, let's continue, and then I'll ask a few questions, and then I'll introduce So, while she's doing the slides, let me ask you my questions. So, right now, it's supposed to be two buildings, one a little in, and then one on the corner. The one that's supposed to be in plan is eight stories, the proposal?
Eight stories. It has a 10-foot setback after the first six stories.
Six stories, so the last two will be a setback.
Yes.
Which, which means it's going to go out of sight, basically. And what about the corner building?
Corner building is five stories.
Okay, and the building that's next to the eight stories, further down, how many, how many eight stories?
Six.
Seven stories, six stories, do you have the answer to that? What's the height?
Which building, which?
The one that's next to the proposed seven story?
That scale, it's six stories, it's six stories.
You have to, if you're going to answer, you have to identify yourself where.
Let's see, so for Ackerman, I believe it's six stories.
The one that's next to the proposed seven, eight stories?
Correct.
The audience will let the folks talk and testify, because we're going to call you off, so that's, all right, and the one on the corner is six.
The one next to the one on the corner is seven stories.
Seven stories, okay. Many of the questions I ask are rhetorical, we get it on the record, just so you know. I'm litigated by trade, you know that's how it works. Haddock, senior Howard.
Good morning, my name is Loy Agios, and I'm Haddock's new CEO. For those who are not familiar with Haddock, Haddock is a nonprofit organization that was established 46 years ago in Astoria, Queens. We have a long history of helping individuals and making communities stronger. We service all age groups, from children to seniors, but providing programs and affordable housing, thank you, and affordable housing to serve the needs of seniors is especially important to us, as it was a major reason for our founder, George D. Doris, to establish Haddock. For the past 20 years, Haddock has played an expanding role as a developer and property manager of affordable senior housing in New York City. Haddock now owns and operates four full-service senior residents in Queens with over 400 units in Astoria and Corona. In addition, we are currently in the final stages of construction for a 232 unit of affordable residency for seniors and families in Flushing. Tens of thousands of seniors today are on a waiting list to get into one of our residencies. Haddock is fully committed to providing affordable senior housing and social programs, promoting quality life and self-sufficiency. We fully support all efforts that make it possible for seniors to age in place. We all know that one of our biggest challenges today is helping seniors maintain their quality of life in their own neighborhoods, and this is why we are excited and committed to be part of this project and lend our experience and support to this developer. Our role will be twofold. First, we will act as the managing agent for approximately 35 affordable senior housing units. This means we will be responsible for marketing, leasing, and ongoing management of the affordable senior housing units. And shortly, my colleague, Najima Rivera, our Director of Property Management, will explain what that means in more detail. Secondly, we will bring our extensive experience in providing valuable social services and activities to the residents of this development and the community. The project will have, the project will have a dedicated community space that will be used not only by the residents, but for the community at large. By social services, we mean providing onsite qualified social workers to help seniors understand the tools and programs available to them, and to build a personalized, healthy living plan to help with their quality of life and independence. We then closely monitor our residents and proactively adjust their plans to help them age in place. For example, navigating Medicare insurance, providing transportation to doctor's appointments, and education in chronic disease prevention. We also provide a variety of social activities to encourage social interaction, which is proven, as you all know, to improve physical and mental well-being. Activities include education classes like computer labs, adult literacy, and English as a second language, arts and crafts programs, which by the way, includes the jewelry that I'm wearing today, cultural events, group, group games, bingo, day trips, to museums, to movies, to cultural centers, and of course, exercise classes that are fun, like yoga and dance. Rest assured that we will always work closely with the community to make sure that the services that we are providing in this residence are what the community needs and wants. We view ourselves as a partner, not only with the developer, but with the community. So, as the expression goes, a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'd like to show you just a few snapshots. I typically, sorry, it's a number two word scan for the new phone working. So, I will just come right here and do it. So, this is an example. This is the George Doris Tower that provides senior housing, as well as a full innovated senior center that is in the same building. This is what it looks like. This is our new Corona Gardens senior resident, and these are just examples of the different activities that take place, not only in College Point, in Astoria, in the different social centers that we, the senior centers that we provide. So, there are classes, there's gatherings, as you can see, a lot of fun that is happening, as well as educational and opportunity for people to interact with each other and learn and grow, and above all, have fun. So, at this point, Najima will give some more information on our property management.
Good morning. My name is Najima Rivera, I'm the Director of Property Management for Haddock. As a property management company, Haddock is fully committed in the development of affordable senior housing, and we support any effort towards that goal. Haddock will be acting as the managing agent for the affordable units presented in the proposal for the Douglasston project. Haddock's role in working on this project will be twofold. We will provide the marketing and property management services for the project. In the marketing process, Haddock will develop the community outreach strategy, working with the city agencies to ensure all requirements are met, entering the applications into the Health and Connect Portal, working with the lottery law, and interviewing the potential tenants. Acting as managing agent for the MIH units, once tenants are selected, Haddock will be charged, in charge of managing the MIH units of the project to work to make sure all requirements and compliances with the city agencies are met and reported on time. For example, income verification and annual recertifications. I would just like to briefly touch upon, the need for affordable senior housing is dire. For example, our new project, Corona Senior Residents, has, is near for 67 units. Currently, we have over 30,000 applicants. We have only reached 250 of those applicants who are qualified and not, the ones that are qualified to fulfill the 67 units. The rest of those applicants will be on the waitlist between five to seven years before we can even give them a phone call and reach them. Our George Doris Towers building, which was built in 2009-- Our George Doris Towers building, which was built in two thousand and nine, we have currently fifty thousand applicants, senior applicants. We just reached applicant number thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine. I would just like to reiterate that HANNETT supports and will continue to support any efforts towards increasing affordable housing, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak with HANNETT and our property management department.
Najima, I'd like to second that, that I too thank you for this opportunity to present to you today, and I truly hope that you see the benefit and the value that this project will bring to the Douglasston community. Thank you again.
You have a question? Because I want to just summarize this and what's in the question.
The only thing I was going to do is just clarify a few points. We talked about the hybrid buildings, I'll just skip that. With respect to the units, a total of thirty-four units in both of the buildings, we set aside a senior affordable. Remaining units, remaining units will be all marketed to those of fifty-five and older. Our environmental consultant here, so he can speak about traffic. We are just, with respect to parking, we're providing between the two buildings, under mid-spaces, more spaces than required by the zoning regulation, six or seven. Actual spaces will be available to the local businesses. As you could, it was also a concern that the building would create a precedent. I don't believe that to be the case, as someone who's practiced in the area of zoning, both working for the city in New York and practicing, have twenty-five years of experience, it's, you don't come across an R-1-2 zoning district where you have existing six and seven-story buildings. So I don't see how it could create a precedent, and I just wanted to point that out. But we've tried to work with the community to the extent we could, and we look forward to building a good project that we can all be proud of and reaching out to residents in the local area. We believe we can fill all of these buildings extremely quickly, and they'll be marketed to community districts and residential residents. And we hope to work with the community to do that. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the testimony. Before I do that, because not everyone speaks, land do speak, I would like to summarize what I believe the project is in one minute, okay? In one minute. So the mid-block site is eight stories, twenty-four units, fourteen units are affordable independent residents for seniors, at eighty percent AMI, which means the average salary for a family, average salary is probably fifty thousand for a single person, for AMI. They have to making, they have to be making at least fifty to sixty thousand dollars in order to live there. So twenty-four units, fourteen affordable independent residents for seniors, that means that half of those units have to go to the community board because of the law. Fifty percent are marketed and have to be given to the community board residents. My understanding is also fourteen hundred square foot of that is for senior community space? And the reason the building is narrow and taller is because we're leaving window space on both sides for the residents of those areas.
The left of us, if you look back to our building, that's Lot One, windows are easy.
Okay.
And tall, so it's not to block those.
Okay. The second building, which is on the corner, is five stories, fifty-nine residents to be marketed to senior citizens over the age of fifty-five. I'm fifty-three, I'm not sure senior's fifty-five or over.
I'm not bothered.
Twenty of those units have to be, according to the law, AIRs, which are affordable independent residents for seniors, so half of those, twenty units, have to go to at least fifty percent of the community.
Correct.
Eleven. Six hundred and ninety-two square feet of community spaces for seniors, and that's basically the project, if I'm not?
Correct. One thing that we are working on with our architect is also-
Ground for retail.
Right.
Got it.
Is trying to incorporate a multipurpose space of two thousand square feet either in the first floor, partially in the first floor, partially in the south of the building that could be utilized by local community groups or run as a senior-type facility by HANNETT who's going to be managing the building. That's something that we're working on now.
I'm just trying to figure out what the project looks like for everybody, because not everybody speaks, you know, hard and fast sort of.
Correct.
So the reason the eight stories is there is because it's such a thin property, right?
Correct.
My understanding is if there's willingness and wants the developers to lower the height.
Correct.
Is that true?
We can work on the design and we might be able to lower it-
Lower the height.
By approximately, approximately one story.
Okay, about two stories, right? Okay, great, thank you. You're going to say for questions?
We're happy to always answer questions.
Okay, so let's go through the testimony. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam President.
We try to go back and forth for our guests. The first testimony is going to be Sebastian Turtele from, how does the third, 2BJ? Hi. This is called project.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sebastian, and I work for 32BJ. I am here today to speak on behalf of the union to express our support for the project. As you may know, we are the largest property service union in the country, and we represent over eighty thousand building service workers who clean and maintain buildings like the ones proposed today. We estimate that when the building opened, they will be staffed by approximately three building service workers, and 24115 Northern LLC and North Shore Realty Group have both committed that these jobs will be good jobs with family sustainability advantages. These are the type of jobs that give New Yorkers the ability to live with dignity and to earn a decent wage. Additionally, we are in full support of much-needed affordable housing for seniors, and for these reasons, we ask you to support this project.
We appreciate, appreciate the work that you do also. Thank you very much. Against the project, we have Nelson Camacho.
Here.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know if this is in any particular order, I don't know. A foreign guest, that's it, right? Alright, please. The next speaker will be Brendan, Brendan from the Queens Chamber.
Good morning, Madam, Madam Borough President. Good morning, all. My name is Nelson Camacho. I'm a resident of Douglasston, and I live approximately a hundred yards from the blast zone of the fraud that's being perpetuated today. After a series of meetings, no one has really explained how, at least based on the census of 2010, twenty-five thousand residents of Douglasston are supposed to get a hip bump for forty-nine regular units and thirty-four assisted living units?
Yeah, what?
I'm sorry, hip bumping. In other words, twenty-five thousand Douglasston residents are going to be displaced, endure extreme hardship. The reason I use the word fraud is because these photos and these renderings are fictitious, they're fantastical. I will give you an example of what the reality is for Douglasston today. Pre-construction, pre-yoga classes. We were only supplied with a token environmental study, a non-existent traffic impact study. The gentleman before said he was happy to answer any questions. The community board had a meeting that was designed just to talk about traffic, and no one came to talk to us. We talked amongst ourselves. It's a question of winners and losers. Who are the winners? The winners are the developers, they get a profit, they realize a gain, they get tax abatements and other economic benefits from New York City. Who are the other winners? Non-Douglasston residents. People who don't live in Douglasston, who don't, who are not part of their fabric and their history. So where's the profit for Douglasston? Where's the losers? Where are the economic benefits for Douglasston? Where's the economic benefit for Northeast Queens? Douglasston doesn't exist in a vacuum, this is a choke point. Douglasston Parkway, Northern Boulevard connects three major highways. Are we going to pretend that this is only going to impact or benefit people in a yoga class? I don't think so. Why is Douglasston being singled out to sacrifice its residents, its character, and its quality of life? I keep hearing quality of life, what about our quality of life? How about public safety? What about the risk multiplier of all the traffic that this is going to increase? The material and permanent negative impact on the pedestrians, commuters, schools, businesses, emergency services? Douglasston gets nothing. This is what's happening now. The traffic is paralyzed today, not tomorrow, today. You get pollution, you get 311, the 911 calls, the decrease of non-existent parking. I agree with the Honorable Borough President. This is a formal meeting, there shouldn't be laughter, but we shouldn't ban crying either. We laugh because we can't cry. This is a failure of due process. I have here a transcript that I painstakingly created of their arguments at the community board, and it's a hundred percent correct. So here I present to you, this is the arguments that they're standing on that they didn't present to us at the community board meeting. So they want to bypass us and con the Borough President's office.
Hug.
I'm against it. It affects our quality of life, and it ruins Douglasston, it ruins the neighborhood, it ruins the quality of life. Thank you.
So just so you know? No, I'm happy to hear it. But just so you know, I'm not easily conned.
I believe you. I'm counting on it. Thank you for our presentation.
So next we have Brendan, lady of Queens Chamber of Commerce. Seriously, I know I'm being a little bit, trying to keep the meeting to a minimal of noise, and I appreciate that people are excited about the topic, and I get it. You know, I'm living third generation in my house, I know what it's like to be part of a neighborhood, and I get it, and I get the excitement, by the way, and I'm happy by the excitement. But if we start doing that each time, it's, we're going to be here till three o'clock, and my kids are half a day, and you know. No, but seriously, we want to keep that, sort of, keep going, and want to make sure that everyone's heard, so thank you.
Good morning, Madam Borough President. I'm here on behalf of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. We represent over eleven hundred corporate members, we've been around for a hundred and seventeen years, we're yourselves are nonprofit organization, dedicated for businesses in Queens. So we are in favor of the project, here Borough President Katz, I'm going to read the letter, the president, the chamber, Tom Brech. Here Borough President Katz, I write in support of the proposal to change rezoning area from R-9-2 to an R-6A zoning district. The rezoning proposal includes a commercial overlay at the intersection of Douglasston Parkway, Northern Boulevard, designation mandatory, including any housing area. Proposed rezoning will allow development of buildings. Building at 24115 Northern Boulevard will be a five-story building, fifty-nine senior housing units, including about twenty units of permanently affordable senior housing, plus six hundred ninety-two square feet of recreation space for seniors. There will also be recreation space for ancillary services. There will be eighty-nine intended parking spaces, and the owner has committed that excess spaces that are underutilized will be available to lower the community with shopping in the lower community parking district. The second building, 4380 Douglasston Parkway, will be an eight-story apartment building, twenty-four dwelling units, about fourteen of which will be permanently affordable for seniors through the MIH government. The second building will also contain about fourteen hundred square feet of community room space for seniors. All of the residential units within the two buildings will be marketed to seniors aged fifty-five and older, about thirty-four units or thirty percent of the residential floor will be permanently affordable for low-income seniors. In contrast to the city senior population, which is only thirteen percent, seniors comprise twenty percent of the Douglasston population, sort of, in the blocks surrounding the rezoning area, the senior population increases to twenty-two percent. Queens community level residents who are in need of affordable senior housing will be given preference where they have to camp of the permanently affordable units. The applicant also has committed to working with local nonprofit, local nonprofit organizations to provide quality services and programs for seniors. HANNETT, we were here earlier. The rezoning, action, and proposed development will bring new senior affordable housing, all the jobs and services for our community that fully support the proposal and requests to be approved or effective. Tom Brech, President, CEO of the Queens Chamber. I don't know if anyone knows the facts about Queens, two-point-three million residents, most diverse place on earth. There are over four hundred thousand people in Queens over the age of sixty-two aging in place, so we better find ways to find affordable housing, obviously, for our senior population, where we have this project.
Thank you. And to put in perspective, so people that are testifying, it would help me, number one, mostly you put your dresses down, so that's very helpful, to know, you know, who's actually from the neighborhood, right, that are testifying about. But it'd also help me if you address, so these are eighty-three new units of housing, eighty-three, right, of all senior housing. Not all, some of it's going to be marketed to seniors, one building's all senior, it's about thirty percent seniors, so it has to be nine. And the others can be marketed to seniors, and it's eighty-three new units. So it would, it would help me if someone, when you testify, put that in perspective on how that sort of hurts the community. That's what we're really trying to figure out here, right? Next is Roy, who said is against the project.
Well, I'll find this kind of question, but one was asked by-
You have to come, I can give you the microphone if you don't want to walk up to it, but you sort of have to be at the microphone for the record, I'm sorry. Huh? Oh, we have a video, I'm sorry, and there's a video too, so that's why. My staff told me that, that's why. I'm sorry, but.
Okay, my name's Roy Giuseppe. I'm a member of Community Board Eleven, but I'm not representing the community today. One thing I say is, my opinion doesn't affect numbers. First of all, people that have been before with those photos, the person said it was, said it was existing condition, it's not. They don't show a bike lane that's over there, they have people, oh, it's actually parked along site to site, so that was not accurate. As far as the shrapnel pattern, and we didn't get into the, think about the intersection of Douglasston Parkway?
We sort of have to-
Okay.
The question's from the, the video doesn't pick up the answers, so just say it anyway.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Things I was going to ask is, we haven't heard any explanation at three previous meetings we've had, public meetings we've had. The applicant showed up at one, the other two they failed out on. No one's ever addressed the situation with the bike lanes that run across Northern Boulevard and the entrance that have into the site two, with the commercial site as well as the tenants' stride. There can be a lot of traffic going through there, especially if there's a restaurant there, which in the paperwork, a hundred-plus page, if I remember correctly, says restaurant. The meeting, they said it's not a restaurant, so. Anyway, there'd be a lot of commercial, residential traffic coming through, one cut driveway, over a bike lane, over curb, and into what is now a two-lane Northern Boulevard. It has to make a right turn. It'd be very difficult for bigger vehicles to come out of there and stay to the right lane without cutting out those lines of the left lane of Northern Boulevard. Also, there's no mention at all about the sanitation trucks and how they're going to be picking up the garbage at that site. At Site Two, the entrance to the building is on Douglasston Parkway, doesn't go through there. There's a right-wing turn right in front of their entrance. So now, the sanitation trucks will unlikely picking up like a hundred trash bags on pickup day, where are they going to set up, where the bags going to be? Can't be in front of the building. If they do it on Northern Boulevard, they're going to park, the truck going to park on one of the lanes, two lanes on Northern Boulevard, or they're going to come into the driveway and ingest traffic there. Never, no one has ever brought that up. Just one more thing that I've written about the Vision Zero project by the city, they're trying to cut down on left-wing turns, turns on intersection. Although they've mentioned about it, is all the traffic leaving Site Two has to make the right turn, and if they want to go east, they have to go west, of course, and then make the first left on Alameda Avenue, which basically, make a left turn, they have to go down to Douglasston Parkway, they're going to have a turn, and go right onto Northern just to head west. So the situation there, if it is, you have the traffic going east, you have to turn west, and then make a turn on Alameda.
Do you have written testimony on the traffic issues that you've commented yesterday? Do you have written testimony on the traffic issues that you've commented on?
I'm only going by what they presented in the 100-page, they don't discuss it at all.
Okay. Can you do me a favor, because there are 200 times that the traffic hours have been brought up, and I think it's important, can you please summarize it for me in a note in your record, so that we have it for the record?
Just email it over?
Yeah, would you mind doing that? Because it'd be helpful, I appreciate it very much.
When I was first with the Chairperson of the Board of Representatives.
I'm not asking you to be, if you're not, you're not an engineer, I got it, no, no, I got it. It's not like for factual records and all that kind of stuff. It's just so that I can sort of have some sense of the community's traffic issues that we have, all right? That's all, I'm not holding you to anything, I'm not here to...
I'll do it.
Okay? Thank you. Steve, do me a favor, can you sit somewhere? Can you guys take a seat somewhere while we have the testimony? It would be, I think, easier for everyone. We have Bob Kurtz in support, senior housing. He did very well. And the next figure is going to be Daniel Bits, President of Princeton Owners Corporation. But after, okay? So, is Jason Murray in the room? Okay, I'm looking for someone in the room, that's four, that's against the project. All right, guys, let's stay in the room for testifying, okay? Hello.
Hi.
You are John Kurtz?
Robert.
You are?
It's a block.
Yeah, Robert.
Bob Kurtz, okay. Here up.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
My name's Robert Kurtz. I'm a resident of Northeast Queens. I'm here to support the development and housing of seniors, excuse me, on Douglasson Parkway. I believe it is very important to develop housing for the most vulnerable among us, seniors. This type of housing will allow older people to stay in their communities and not have to be continually worrying what happened to maintain their homes. We should be applauding this development, not opposing it. I hope you will improve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, very much. We appreciate it. Just for everyone that's testifying, we all understand this is probably like one of your first times doing stuff like this. You know, we're a pretty easy crowd, all right? So, yeah, you kind of have fun with it, you're part of the public process. I know it's not a fun item, I get it, but you're, you know, you're being part of the democracy, and that's important. You are Daniel Bits?
Yes, yes, good morning.
Good morning. You're doing all this with the pictures in three minutes?
Uh, probably, yes, good morning. My name is Dan Bits. I'm here to speak to you as an individual resident of Douglasston for the past 30 years, as well as the Board President for Princeton Owners Corp., a 45-unit cooperative residence located at 4420 Douglasson Parkway, adjacent to one of the sites. I myself and the majority of our residents strongly oppose any rezoning in our neighborhood that would most definitely result in increased automobile and commercial traffic, increased levels of danger for pedestrians crossing Douglasson Parkway, as well as public curbside parking becoming increasingly insufficient, therefore experiencing increased levels of double parking and roadway congestion, all within a one-block area. I call attention to the photos that you see, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Oh, that was it? That was good?
Now, this is right here. This is our building, and this is the site.
You got to use the microphone.
I'm sorry.
I just get to see recorded for the general public.
Okay, this is, this is our building here. You can see the Princeton right here, and this is one of the, one of the proposed sites, it's vacant now. Our building, by the way, is seven stories, not six.
And the parking that may be available in the development is not helpful? I'm asking, I'm not...
I cannot imagine that that would solve what we deal with every single day.
No, it would solve...
We deal, we deal with double parking on both sides of the street.
So, just, I'm just sort of trying to get the record right. So, the six spaces required for the eight-story building, it's very thin, they're putting 19 spaces. There is 63 required for the corner, they're putting 89.
The traffic, yeah, not in our opinion, I mean, we're not professional people here, but in our, in our, the intersection of Douglasson Parkway and Northern Boulevard, particularly during peak traffic hours, this traffic goes from the corner almost all the way to the railroad station, which is multiple blocks. At times, on both sides of the street, because of double parking during those hours, it becomes crazy.
Well, regardless of the project or not, we should probably get the DOT out there to try and figure out some better answer, regardless of the project.
Okay.
I understand, believe me when I tell you...
Bike lanes. We could use some speed bumps too along this road, by the way. But it's crazy.
I don't know about speed bumps, but, okay.
Thank you very much for listening.
These pictures were taken recently, aren't they?
Yes, very, we brought these photos to the town meeting, public meeting.
They're probably here at dusk, so they're probably around...
It was during peak hour.
Around like 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, for the project, John Kurtz, we're in to help. Hello. How are you?
Good. Good morning. My name is John Kurtz, and I'm speaking on behalf of Georgia Motors, Queens Board 11, was unable to attend base hearing.
Move to the record, we got a letter in support from...
The Queens Board of Congress?
Yeah, we got the letter, so I'm just telling everybody else that we got a letter in support.
Dear Madam Borough President Katz, I'm a local resident of Northeast Queens. I have to support the proposed ULURP and redevelopment of 241-15 Northern Boulevard and 43-80 Douglasson Parkway. The proposed development will improve the appearance of two unused sites that are burning in eyesore and have been for years. Additionally, the proposed building will fit in well with contextually with its adjacent buildings. Most importantly, the Northeast Queens community, especially the Douglasston, Little Neck, and Bayside area, has an acute lack of affordable senior housing services. I'm glad to hear that all the residential units will be marketed to seniors ages 55 and older, including a significant number of affordable units. It is for these reasons that I support this proposal. Thank you, and sincerely, Georgia Motors.
Thank you very much. All right, against is Robert Brusco.
Yes, here.
Good morning, Madam Borough President. My name is Robert Brusco, I'm a 15-year resident of Douglasston, and I'm here this morning speaking on behalf of the over, close to 800 residents of San Francisco in opposition of this rezoning amendment. I am also a practicing real estate attorney, have practiced for the last 25 years. In those 25 years, I have seen responsible development improve, dramatically improve communities. I've seen irresponsible development destroy communities. Make no mistake about it, this proposed rezoning amendment unfortunately presents a dangerous crossroads for this community. There are a number of reasons why. Safety, I'm not going to belabor the points that have already been made, but the fact of the matter is, you mentioned DOT. DOT has actually done nothing but exacerbate an already awful condition on one of the main arteries, okay, in the Douglasson community. This project will do nothing to improve that situation. Congestion, as one of my fellow residents just demonstrated, unfortunately, as pretty as the slides were, they were not representative of what was on the community on a daily basis. In fact, the largest problem, I think, with today's presentation is it doesn't focus on the most important thing here, which is the impact on the quality of life on a daily basis for all of the people in this room, for all of the residents of Douglasston and Little Neck. Kids cross those streets on a daily basis from school. Elderly cross those streets every day on a daily basis. You want evidence about the issues? The 145 accidents that have occurred on the stretch from Douglasson Parkway to the cross-eyed entranceway in the last year, I think is pretty compelling evidence for the serious traffic congestion and safety problem there. Burn and destruction, schools, sanitation, loss of green space. I heard somebody say that there's an eyesore there now. I'm not sure what they see, but we see green space, which is actually joy in Douglasston. And most importantly, I'd say, is precedent. This is a slippery slope. We allowed this amendment to go through, there are plenty of other sites in Douglasston and Little Neck, that I'm sure developers are salivating over, just hoping this amendment gets passed. We've seen the kind of development to the west of us, which in my view, has been relatively haphazard and irresponsible. We don't want to see that happen at Douglasston. I will say to you, join this delegation, join Community Board 11, join the residents in this room, who are in the best position to determine the practical impact of this zoning re-amendment on our daily lives. There's only one right and responsible decision here, and that's to reject this amendment. Thank you.
So, I would, I would appreciate it if, no, thank you very much. Again, when you testify, if you can talk a little bit about, these are 83 units, large percentage of which by law have to be senior housing, the rest of which will be marketed to senior housing. So, I, I understand the traffic issues, by the way, they're all over the borough, and to me, it's like, you know, I look, I don't know how many people know, Yellowstone Boulevard is backed up on a daily basis. It takes me a half hour to get to Queens Boulevard, and then it takes me five minutes to go the rest of 10 miles, I believe. So, all I'm saying is that if we can focus a little bit on what's actually going to be there, it would be really helpful to me in just figuring this out, and also in the council meeting, we agreed to the testimony. Okay, so, for the project, Jason Marys, for senior housing. And...
Discuss me.
Okay. Yeah, everybody's putting their addresses, that's good.
Hi, my name is Jason Murray, and I'm speaking on behalf of Edward LaGrasse. Give this text, there is an extreme shortage of rental housing in our Queens neighborhood, the last being built about 50 years ago. The developer is proposing to mature two buildings, one of which is a rental focused on seniors. I am an active member at Urban Land Institute, a 30,000-member global organization devoted to sound, sustainable projects. I have also been a member of Community Board 11's Land Marketing Committee, and a trustee of the Douglasston and Little Neck Association for about 20 years. The current zoning in which these two properties are located is R-2. This does not make any sense, since all the buildings in the area are six-story apartments, not single-family homes. The current zoning is a remnant of plan introduced that is no longer relevant. Proposed building that is being planned at the intersection of Douglasson Parkway and Northern Boulevard incorporates sound planning principles, which are focused on senior citizens, near public transportation, buses, and ally R.R., is a mid-rise in keeping with the scale of adjacent apartment buildings, provides parking for local residences and small retailers, and also aesthetic agreement. I have seen that the limb hairy drawings for the large project is the kind of development that would be good to include, both on the and aesthetic basis. This is important to me as an active member of our community, an architect, and one interested in good design and preservation. There will be support for this project once the details are known. At a meeting on October 22nd at Community Board 11, the developer discussed their two projects. However, most people in the room came to the meeting with a predetermined negative attitude. Providing correct information did not alter this attitude, since many attendees were there to stop any development. Some who would have supported the project told me they were intimidated by the mob mentality to speak up. Prior to the October 22nd meeting, I received three phone calls asking me to protest the project that they had never seen, and all were misinformed. They did not want to be confused by the facts in their NYI, MV protest. Sincerely, Edward T. LaGrasse.
Thank you. So, just so we have on the record, so that they don't need to come back unless they want to, the diocese of Brooklyn did a letter of support, George Mahalzis did a letter of support, Queens EDC, Ed LaGrasse, and again, Queens Chamber, and I think that's it. Okay. And we've gotten tons of emails against, okay. So, those will be part of the record, right? I think those are, that's part of the record. Okay, so we have one that's against, but he doesn't state the name. The email is just dark, nice, scrub. Oh, that's you. Okay. Yeah, it's all right, no problem. No problem. No problem. No, we have two emails against, that's weird.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to point this to my speaker by saying that I don't think any going issue in this room is against the campaign.
Use the microphone, sorry.
I think everyone in this room is supportive of affordable housing for seniors, however, that is not the issue here. The issue here is rezoning our area, which is going to open a series of serious, if you just, problems for the community and for the residents. Just a few statements. I'm an English professor at St. John's University, and I've been a resident of Douglasston for over 40 years. I, along with fellow homeowners and members of the Douglasston Civic Association, am greatly disturbed with regard to the proposed change in the zoning regulations in our area. Once again, the current administration appears to be instigating another project based on self-interest, with little consideration of the impact it is going to have on our residents. This is another example of a surreptitious attempt to deprive the residents of Douglasston Little Neck of the quiet enjoyment of their homes, to which they were entitled to when they purchased their homes in the first place. If passed, this will create a plethora of debilitating problems and set a very dangerous precedent. If these buildings go up, it will open the door for more and more and more development on our residential streets. But there is a broader issue here, and I think it involves the city once again overstepping its authority and imposing a predetermined decision to promote an agenda based on self-interest and an underhanded involvement in real estate deals. The public is given a de facto opportunity to speak, but as noted with the recent outcome in many areas, for example Astoria, ultimately, they have had little to say with regard to the outcome. So, we in the Douglasston Little Neck community are hoping to get the assistance of you, Madam Borough President, to help us, because changing the zoning will have a major impact on the quality of life, and we truly need your help and support to overcome this problem. It's a serious, serious issue, and it will have negative effect on everyone who lives in our area.
Thank you. Is City Planning here? Hi, is City Planning, you can come in, I just want to ask them something for you. I have four. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi. Can we, just for the record, can we get at some point before a final decision, a list of other lots that are all wanted to, that are vacant in the area? I'd be curious to know how many lots there are. Thanks. Vincent Paluso is an area resident, hi.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Vincent Paluso, I'm a resident, a follower of young citizens in the area. I support this application for rezoning, I think it will help give a fight in the area. I think that the lots should be used in a way that's positive to the community, and new buildings, match existing nearby buildings there. It'll help create more business to the retail shops that are there. Douglasston needs more senior housing, like the gentleman describing calls it, these apartments are good. Option for seniors living in larger homes, we're looking to downsize like my in-laws, but will help with my kids if they're very close. It's, so I hope you will support the application. Just took a couple of notes based on what you... Just took a couple of notes based on what people are talking about. The traffic issues, they keep bringing up traffic issues, the DOT repped it with this whole bike lane, that they took a whole third lane out of Northern Boulevard, and that starts at 6:00 AM. They didn't also tell you about the accidents due to the camera, that light camera. Most of the accidents on that intersection are always because of that.
No, no. Wrong, wrong.
So, I've been living there for years. I've lived in the manor, in the reverse. I help out with the, my assistant president has a lot of parish, parish, and everything else. Thank you. I hope you all go okay.
So the argument being that because of the roadblock cameras here, people are much more aware of it, it's been stopped, sure.
Sure, yes, yes. You see it all with.
Start here, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, yes. John Leary against the project, Douglasston Civic Association.
Good morning, Madam President. As a former assistant principal of the New York City High School, I faced a lot tougher crowds. Now, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I'm John Leary. I'm the secretary of the board of directors of the Manor House, an 88-unit cooperative residence located at the intersection of Northern Boulevard and Douglasston Parkway. The Manor House will face one of the proposed apartment buildings that is requesting the zoning change from the current R12 to R6A. This rezoning will set a dangerous precedent, not only for Douglasston, but for the entire surrounding community, including that of Flushing and Little Neck. In erecting such buildings, heavy-duty equipment, including jackhammers and pile drivers, would be used. We have all seen on the media examples of the damage that this type of equipment can have on adjacent buildings. Both proposed structures are contiguous to three apartment buildings. Neither of the new buildings will have adequate parking spaces, forcing parking onto already crowded streets. The parking facilities at both of these new buildings will pose increased traffic congestion and accidents on both Douglasston Parkway and Northern Boulevard. In addition, these additional structures are supposed to contain affordable senior housing. However, developers use the metric called the area median income, or AMI. New York developers cite the AMI because the city uses this to assess which renters are eligible for subsidized housing. The AMI income level doesn't reflect the five boroughs, since it also accounts for Westchester, Rockland, and Putnam Counties, which are regions within a significant high or median income. In other words, affordable housing units aren't always given to the lowest-earning senior citizens who need the apartments the most. For these and other issues raised by previous speakers, the Manor House residents, all 77 of them, I presented a petition to the Community Board at the meeting in October. Thank you.
Thank you. For Vinnie Paluso. Jenny's? No? Okay. Jay, I just texted you a question. Hi, just send your name on the record, please. Because I, Gina Palus, there you go. Thanks.
I happen to see the drawings, and I happen to see the proposals. To me, it's far from the end of the world. I also live in a community. You know, I don't see it being that much of a hampering project to the neighborhood.
Do you see it being a better?
I can see it being a plus, while people, stores, and businesses were also benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Russell against the project. Douglasston Civic Association, I'm a senior.
So in the interest of time, I'll try to condense my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am opposed to this spot rezoning proposal. I almost feel like this is a tale of two cities. On one hand, we have an indifferent developer group that is assisted by deeply entrenched, a deeply entrenched political machine, as evidenced by the Ackerman firm that's here today. I mean, seriously, you really only need to look back as far as last year, when emails were disclosed, which indicated how wired they are into City Hall and the City Planning Commission. And then we have our local politicians. At our public hearing, there was a notable and conspicuous absence of any of our local politicians. And I would also say that the developer, they did show up, but they left. They didn't talk to the group at all. This is, this development, this, excuse me, rezoning application is not part of an overall, well-articulated vision for the community, which we as residents in Douglasston and Little Neck, we deserve that. I found it curious, as one of my other speakers had said, we support senior housing, we support our seniors. However, it's laughable that people are saying that they have engaged the community, they have not. Neither Hennick nor the developer have gone out of their way to engage the community or to speak to us about the benefits that will be provided to the community. So I'm not going to get into, many of the other speakers already have or will, I won't get into the traffic congestion and the infrastructure concerns and the quality of life, I'm sure that that will be addressed. But I'm going to say most egregiously, this development, this rezoning, does not address life safety concerns. Accidents, both vehicular and pedestrian, are likely to happen, are already happening on the intersection, at the intersection of Northern Boulevard and Douglasston Parkway. I cross that intersection as a resident several times a day, at various times of day, and I'm scared. I've almost been sideswiped by cars, almost been hit by a couple of cars, and that's now. That's currently, without this development going into effect. And quite honestly, I mean, I'm sorry, I'll make this very quick. And honestly, if we've got seniors living in the neighborhood, then I would imagine that's even more of a concern that really needs to be addressed. So on the other side, we're the residents here, we are not paid to be here today, it's not part of our job, we're not, it's not a fee, and it is not part of our employment.
What's the more concern with the seniors there?
Well, okay, so I'm a senior, and I'm an able-bodied senior. So I have concerns about crossing that intersection over, in the morning, in the evening, various times during the day, and there is a lot of traffic, there's a lot of congestion at that intersection, which is exacerbated by the bike lane. So I guess what I'd like to say is, we'll remember in November. Thank you.
So that's aside, thank you for your. Chris, Elias, thank you, I appreciate you helping me there. It is for the project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to read a statement on behalf of my brother Elias Fielas, who's a member of Community Board 11. I also live in Douglasston and for the project, just a reference to the statement. My name is Elias Fielas, I live in Douglasston Manor, and a member of Community Board 11. I support the development of the two lots in Douglasston Parkway, which are intended for senior housing. I believe that senior affordable housing is needed, and would be a great benefit to our community. I believe that the developers have to work with the community and our municipal agencies to alleviate the concerns regarding the vehicular congestion and safety pedestrians on Northern Boulevard and Douglasston Parkway. Thank you.
Did, was Elias at the meeting?
I believe so.
All right. Right, because he might have been staying.
No, I have no idea. I'm just here to understand.
All right. All right, thank you. Against, is Sean Walsh, president of the Douglasston Civic. Sean, how are you?
Thank you, Madam Borough President, it's a pleasure to be here today and address you again on many zoning issues. So let me, let me address the question that you posed before, spent a little time on senior citizen issue. So Hennick talks to us about aging place. Let's be kind of realistic, you know the community, you know its income level, which is rather high. Even if you don't have a large income, certainly your estate, your house, is worth a lot of money. There are rare exceptions, I understand, but I would say 99% of the people in Douglas who could sell their home, move to a better location, or a smaller step down in Manhattan or Nassau County, a townhouse or something else like that, they could afford to do that. So affordable housing is very important in the city, but this is really a land grab by the developers, and they're using the senior citizen good image, okay? Hennick gets the contract money, so if they're going to do anything at those buildings, they're going to get contract money, they all get their money. The question is, the people in Douglasston don't need senior housing. There are places in the area that do, and it's, why are we subsidizing as a city, the higher fluid areas where other parts of the city, Western Queens, Manhattan, parts of Brooklyn. So that's really a bit of a myth. The only reason they're using senior housing then, is they go, the mayor wants to say he's got this done, and choose because they're going to make money off of it. And what happens is that, you know, that's all politically correct, and this is a spot they can go and make some money off of, and save the seniors. The other reason the developer wants it is because he has to have fewer parking spaces. Now, when you think of senior housing, when it was first proposed by the mayor, it was great because seniors don't drive that much, they don't need the cars. That's true for much of Queens. I grew up in Jackson Heights, you don't need a car in 10,000 stores and two blocks. Douglasston, you've got a double, that's what you have, left over there, it's a car in there. You don't, you need a car in Douglasston if you're a senior. Every one of the people, this was presented at our community meetings, this was presented at the Community Board, and at the hearing, and we had real estate people, local real estate people, who laughed at it. They're not going to move from a small little apartment there, and what's the rent differential? Why are we subsidizing people to do that, so they are remained wealthy? So, you know, this is not all about senior housing, that's a myth. He wants to reduce the number of parking spaces on the grounds that they don't need cars, because they're seniors. That's not true in our neighborhood. You do need a car to survive here. Now, let's.
So do me a favor, because you're the only one that's approached this topic. So they have extra parking that are required by the law. Does that not help or hurt your argument?
No, they actually have less, according to the law, what is the law? A law is for senior responsive housing, they actually have fewer spaces than they would be required if this was just being built for the apartments.
I see. So your argument is not that, your argument is that if this were just a market value house, they would need more parking spots.
Which takes away rental apartments from them.
And would they need more than, and I'm asking because I truly haven't looked it up yet, would they need more in a house of 59 units, would they need more than the 89 units that they've done in that building, where it could be marketed?
Yes, and the other question here is there are.
They would need more than a one-to-one ratio?
Yes. Many people, many people, they have cars.
Right, but by the law.
But not.
With the remark that they'd need more.
Oh, they, yeah.
I do agree. You're saying there would be more than a one-to-one parking spot for 59 units, there would be more than 89 spaces?
Well, what are the 89 spaces, this is the other point I was going, quickly. What are the 89 spaces allocated to merchants and others? There's no guarantee those people, they would go find it.
That's somehow like land use, right? So in the other building, it's 24 units, and there's supposed to be 19 units, so it might be less than what you'd require for market, I just don't know. I'll look it up, but, huh? No?
This came up under the various applications, like water company, large parking.
All right, I'm just trying to figure out the arguments, that's all. Because if the argument, I had the same argument with the city, right? I mean, they did the GQX, as you know, I voted against it. I didn't think that it was good to have mandatory in every building, because every neighborhood is different. So I agree with that. But I had the same argument with the city, which is just because they're seniors doesn't mean that I drive in Queens, right? So that's why I'm more curious as to what we're discussing about. But we'll look up the numbers.
Okay, Jay, quickly, just, perfect comment. The other major issue, and I think is enormous next to me, is this is a spot zone, so the application is illegal per se.
So the other two buildings, the other buildings that are on that block are now in an R12? So my understanding, and again, you know, I usually do a lot of research after, though I was land use for a lot of years, I was chair of the land use committee in the city council. So my understanding is that they're bringing the other buildings that are there into conformity in my law?
You can't bring them into conformity, okay, by doing a little spot. So you remember we did a 197A plan?
Yeah.
Okay, many years ago, and there's been contextual rezoning in the neighborhood since that, okay? And city planning has therefore looked at this neighborhood twice, okay, in addition to PSA, okay? And what they have said with our 197A plan, the community re-recommended these plots be raised from R12, two purpose unuses, to R5B and C12 over there, okay? City planning, as in the record of one of these 78 applications you've outlined in your office, and we brought it up, and it's going to be on a lawsuit against the city, they said, no, don't do that, Sean, leave the 197, deal with it, whoever answers, that will make the more than conform, if you try to increase the zone.
I don't know, I'm asking a factual question. The buildings that are there now that are six stories are in fact in an R12 zone.
Correct.
So if we change the whole block, and I'm not saying we are, you're saying, they're, if the whole block's changed from R6, it brings the buildings that are there now into conformity, right? Is then the FAR would be right?
So the city planning has said they can't do that previously, they've made that statement. Okay, so it flies against that. But again, just that block is not overall rezoning of the area, they can't use spot zone, which is what they're doing here, which means it concerns a lot of people in the community and I would be more expression. We have lots of blocks, so USC planning can look for vacant lots, look for lots that also have one-story building on them, and step them down, and they can do this where they want.
All right, I hear your argument, I got it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Rhonda Caruso, four. I don't know, there was one of the three people that crossed out, is that us, or that they decided to, you're talking to them.
No, they're here. I didn't know that.
All right.
Good morning, I'm Rhonda Caruso, and I'm the director at the College Point Senior Center, and I work for Hennick. And I would like to start my three-minute talk by saying, Hennick is not about all the money. They've been around for 40, 45 years, and trust me, it's not about the money. Their hearts and souls are into the seniors, or else I'd be making a very large salary. Okay? I just want to give you a little bit of an insight on what the seniors do. They're served a nutritionist well-balanced meal every single day, they have an agenda made every month for them, which includes autocross, exercises, and not only yoga, evidence-based programs, which prove that the exercise does keep them healthy, which why they're living longer. Bingo, danceercise with a karaoke DJ, yoga, zumba, feed-making, swimming classes, bowling, movies, parties, trips, small vacations, singing classes by the Brooklyn Conservatory of Music, Arts and Culture, fundraising, shows, informative speakers, health promotions, health management, education, technology classes, breakfast, ice cream socials, and all of our consultants are certified. The importance of our seniors center, it gives the seniors a reason to wake up in the morning, to take a shower, to get dressed, to go out and socialize. Many of you in this room are very well-off and very well-taken care of, but there are seniors out there who's. seniors out there whose families moved far away, and they're alone. And loneliness is a horrible, horrible thing. I see it every day for 20 years working with them. They're good people. They're not poor souls, they just need company, and they need help maintaining their homes. I'm from College Point, all my seniors' homes are house owners. I have people from Whitestone coming, Bayside, they all have big homes, they just can't maintain them anymore. So, housing is so very important for them, and it would put a senior center or a community room smack in the middle, so they don't have to worry about getting hit by cars outside, because they wouldn't have to go out looking for it, it would be right there for them. So, I for this project, and I hope that it turns out well. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, Henry Uler, against, and then we're going to call right after him. Irene?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just this morning, I got a petition signed by over 80 seniors, because I just found out about this yesterday, so I would have gotten many.
Hi.
Thank you.
Henry Uler, against, and Irene Solano is going to be next.
Good morning, my name is Henry Uler, I'm First Vice President of the Walkman Dale and Brooklyn Association. I am not a resident of Douglasston, but I come today to support the people of Douglasston who oppose this project. I was also contacted this morning by Community Board Eleven, they asked me to speak about what happened with the community board when the hearing was held. We had a committee hearing first on September 26th, and we heard all of the different opinions about the case, and we heard the residents talk about the problems with the traffic, with the parking, with the infrastructure, and the committee voted against the project, 11 against and one abstention. The case then went to the full board hearing on October 22nd, and at that, again, we had about, it was estimated there were 300 residents that came to the meeting to oppose the, to oppose this particular rezoning. And after we heard the case, we wanted to hear from the applicant, but the applicant left the meeting without testifying before us. So, we had no choice but to proceed. The people that gathered there were very well-mannered, and listened very carefully to everything, it was not a mob scene at all. And what happened was that the board then voted 24 against, nobody in favor, and two abstentions. And by the way, Mr. Philias, who was a board member, and we had heard from testimony before, he voted, he did come to that meeting on October 22nd, and he voted against the project. But today, we hear that he's had a change of heart and he supports it. So, that was just something I'm curious. Mr. Mahalasis was not at the meeting, and he just sent in testimony to the support of the project. Now, my civic association opposes this particular project because we feel that this rezoning is not rezoned, and that if this is passed, this will set a precedent, and we will see this kind of spot rezoning going on in other areas of Northeast Queens. We work very hard for our rezonings over the years, and we don't want to see any spot rezoning done. There were suggestions of the community board that perhaps the developers should go back and do a variance case instead of a rezoning case. This way, the community would have input into what would be put at these locations, that somehow there could be a compromise arranged, so that whatever is built there is something that fit into the community and wouldn't cause problems for the community. So, we thought that would be very important. Thank you very much for letting me ask that.
One question.
Yes.
Do we? Because I have run meetings for 25 years, right? So, I'm curious as to what prompted the community board to have community comment before the presentation of the project?
No, they, actually, they had, I believe they had asked the applicant to come forward, because we have a process at the community board, the applicant always goes first.
Right, so what happened here? My understanding is...
They were there, and then all of a sudden, they were gone.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking why there was community comment before the applicant made their presentation, because I know that that's true, I'm just curious as to why. What happened?
I, I thought that the community comments came right at, and saw that they had left. Christine Hader, who's our chair, she just continued with the hearing, she said, "We have to make a comment, we have to..."
So, your understanding is that the applicant had left before the meeting started? Your understanding is the applicant, no, 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 thank you. Your understanding is that the applicant had left before the comment hearing?
Yeah.
So, when they started the meeting, they weren't there?
They started the meeting, and she, she...
Started this item, they weren't there.
There was only one item on the table.
Right, so when they started the item, the applicant wasn't going to testify? Is that, is that what they were...
Well, they were there, but then, she had laid down the rules for the particular, this particular case, and she had asked the applicant to come up to present their case, and they weren't there.
Okay. I'm trying to, alright, Henry, it's alright, thank you. I, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out why the, the usual protocol wasn't followed, but I'll talk to the chair about that, it's alright, thank you. And Steve, you guys, the applicants can come back and testify at the end on the questions, alright? So, please. Irene Solano, here. Oh, hi. Very interesting.
I won't repeat a lot of what has already been said, because I don't think it's necessary. But I live, my name is Irene Solano, and I live about 200 feet from this intersection. To call that intersection a late near is a complete understatement, but there are a lot of late nears in the city, so we know that. But, at that town meeting, that was just the subject of conversation, there were so many people, there had to be at least, they, they recorded like 300, they were out the door, they couldn't all fit in the building. There were some people that were out on the sidewalk because it seemed to have hurt. And yes, I do recall, I was inside, and I do recall that when the president of the board asked for the applicant to, to presentation, we were all waiting, and she said, "Is he here, is he here?" There was no response.
And that was before the comment hearing?
I believe it was, I believe it was.
According to my staff, so apparently, the comment hearing came first, but that's alright, I'm not asking you to defend it forth. I just wanted to know what happened.
Yeah, I didn't know what the proper procedure would be, but that was the case, but...
I'm not asking anybody to defend, I just, you know, I just wanted to try to figure out what happened.
So, maybe, maybe they could have reached some of us there and convinced them, but they didn't even give us the opportunity to listen to them. And, I'm kind of like a little confused whether we're, if they're going to be voting on the land use of this thing, or we're talking about rezoning. Because I see it as spot zoning, which to me, when, some of yous back, when they did the R1-2, when they did the whole rezoning thing, the whole purpose and intent of that was to prevent exactly what is happening, saying like, "Oh, well, that piece over there, we want to do this with it, so let's spot zone that, and that one over there, let's spot zone that," and all that. And all of a sudden, all the rezoning efforts that went into this whole major project are all now being dissected and diffused, and there was a reason for it. And all of those apartment buildings, in my understanding, if it's correct, that they say is the, in keeping with the, with the nature of the, yeah, those are all grandfathered. I understand, and again, I didn't live there at the time, but before they even established zoning, those buildings, the pilings were going in, and I've heard from people that it was like, "Okay, get it in, get it done, because they're going to be zoning, and we are not going to be in, you know, conformance with it." So, when they say that it, it kind of offends the nature of the neighborhood, it really doesn't. My concern basically is the congestion and the safety aspect. We are not against senior citizens moving into the neighborhood, we already, I am a senior citizen, and I do cross that intersection, and many years ago, I was hit by a car crossing there, and my head's spinning, so I, I just feel that it has not been well-thought-out, and as Sean had said, they're using this as a, and the other developers are just sitting there waiting. So, that's...
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Lilian Gonzalez, four. She comes in, we'll let her see. Robert Muller, four.
Good morning, I think everybody's... I'm for this project for the simple reason that we need affordable housing for seniors. It's dire need, lady earlier was talking from Hennick about the numbers that we have. The other issue I see is, it seems like the Department of Traffic needs to be over here in regard to this situation, because I do agree with the seniors against it on the fact that it is a safety issue, but I can, talk with regard to Queens Boulevard years ago was a major, they called it the Avenue of Death, and the mayor got on it, and he fixed it, I think it was in a year and a half, he fixed that situation, where it was extremely, a lot of people were dying, and I think it's like, in the last three years, one person has been deceased since then. So, that was a great job. It's, Department of Traffic needs to be on this situation, I hope you take that part to deal with it, so that the people from the neighborhood have their say in the matter. But, the dire need of affordable housing can't be expressed anymore, then it needs to be done. And not just in your community, but in every community. I'm from a story, there's like, real story of seniors sitting, senior citizens buildings that are up there, and flourishing very well, and it adds a lot of life to people who may be, some, a good part of them might just be staying home in their apartments and not getting out, and now they can go to a senior center in the, in the area, help themselves out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lilian as well. So, George Ramirez, against?
Yes, I'd like to yield my time to Sean Walsh.
Okay. He went, ready?
Yeah, well, he can speak in my, he can continue speaking, he had cut himself short.
Did he? Okay. Did you cut yourself short? Because I didn't notice that. Okay? Oh, but then I continued asking questions, I was trying to help. I tried. So, your time has been yielding, if you'd like to say anything else? I mean, his time has been yielding, if you want to say anything else?
I just wanted to dwell on the second topic, I have another chance to touch on, and that is the spot zoning issue that's here. So, fundamentally, this particular application has a great thing to the entire zoning regulation of the city. Of course, oh, the mayor likes to push his city planning commission ahead to do spot zones through the chains for it, because he doesn't have time to do the zoning. And review, like we had in the neighborhood that Solano spoke about. By doing this, he's undermining what is the role of BSA, okay? He is not doing a community rezone. He's taking two pieces of property that he wants to give developers, a tall building, and they're going to get some senior housing so he looks good, and then they're going to cut the parking. So, what does he do? He's not, they're not looking at the entire block, they're not looking at the neighborhood like they've already done. They're not looking at the specific site, which is what, under a variance, BSA did. So, when BSA looked at this property, they measured the true economic return they get, should we get a variance? Varians is the means to escape rules under the city planning zoning resolution. In this particular case, okay, they're avoiding that. So, what was the result of a variance? It was a three-and-a-half-story building, which is a spark five year, okay? And, actually, not that we wanted it rezoned to, the city planning didn't want it rezoned to, but the precedents here are, if you're going to allow for some benefit, spot zone of any place that wants to do a, to do a larger building in a zone, you won't have to go and spend money, okay, and you won't have that review from BSA. But, under case law in this state, BSA is the only valve to relieve you from city planning rules, unless the city planning does a comprehensive review of a larger area, and can explain why that works in total context. And that's why buildings start tall, medium, small, very small, they're scaled. Obviously, in this project, they're not going to be scaled. People here have, there's, there's two major co-ops who have investment, economic investment here, and fortunately for them, their building came before zoning resolution on the doorstep. Two of them were before, and the other ones were all, had their foundation in, which they preserved in 1961, 1962.
Right, so these buildings were put up pre-1961.
Correct.
This zoning was done in 61. So, just try to put it in perspective, right? So, this zoning was done in 1961. The buildings were already there, the buildings that are there are not in conformity with existing zoning.
Correct. So, the question is now, how do we, how do we build them into a particular, the way you're supposed to go is through variance, and if you don't do that, you're undermining the common law issue of taking away people's property. So, zoning can't take away people's property and force them to have a limit. They have to, has to be a broad perspective, city interest can have a zoning resolution. The escape from that is variance. Escape here is, I'm going to skip all of that, go right through, and proceed. So, I know the mayor's doing this in other neighborhoods, and we've engaged in awareness, we're willing to give it a court appeals, because at the end of the day, he can sit here, and he's going to lose. But the danger is, if this does not stop, you're going to have problems enforcing his own resolution.
Thank you very much. For Sylvia Ruiz. Sylvia, are you here? Oh, you are here, okay, great, thank you. And then there are three more witnesses after that, Ms. Sanho Stevens?
Sanho Stevens.
Huh?
Sanho Stevens.
Sanho, Sanho Stevens. Elliot Sochi, and Dennis Dematopoulos. Hi guys. Dematopoulos.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Honorable Melinda Kansky. My name is Sylvia Ruiz, and I live in an affordable senior building, for Hennick. I have, I feel very comfortable there, very safe, and all these activities that they showed, they're not fake, they're all real. We do have a lot of dancing, a lot of parties, we celebrate birthdays, and we have a gentleman that works for you who lives in Upstate. Angelo Melendez.
So... Sure, thank you, go ahead.
I feel, like I said before, I feel safe. We have security, we have facilities for doing laundry, it's very safe at Hennick. George T. Doris, and we do need a lot of help, and a lot of apartments for seniors. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, appreciate it. Which building do you live in?
27?
40?
40, right off the Old Triborough Bridge.
Thanks, yes. Alright, Sanho Stevens. Next is Elliot Sochi, and then Dennis Dematopoulos.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. My name's Sanho Stevens, I'm a resident of Douglasston for over a dozen years, and I'm here to speak against this project. Look, let's, let's be clear, no one wants to promote affordable housing, affordable housing is a major issue in the city, but what this is really about is whether zoning rules matter. There is, you know, what's happening here, let's be clear, is, is spot zoning, as Sean all pointed out, it's a change in what's happening. And, and, you know, yeah, affordable housing is important, housing procedures are important, but, you know, the planning and the reason why zoning is created is also important. You're not going to build, you build a affordable housing complex in the middle of Alley Pond, no you don't. And there's a reason for that. There's a reason why this is R1-2 zoning. The historical context of that should be considered. When there was testimony at the community board, a... If there was testimony at the Community Board, Community Board 11 meeting, from an urban planner talking about this, and the arguments presented here today, this new building going up is going to be, it'll be consistent with the existing apartment buildings that are there. But that forgets the historical context. When the R12 zoning was being put into place, those buildings were either there or the foundations were already there, and the arguments that were made at the time was that this is R12 zoning and it won't change, these are the only buildings that are going to be here. What we've heard here today is a perfect example of what happens when you forget that historical context. The argument is, well, these are, they'll be in conformity with these existing buildings, so it's not much of a change. That's the dangerous precedent that we're concerned about. Because then down, further down northern Boulevard, you've got the St. Anastasia parking lot. Well, we can build here, because this, this new building that we're proposing, for example, is going to be aligned with these existing, the these proposed buildings. You said that you're not easily fooled. Well, the, the arguments about this being for affordable housing, that's a smoke and mirrors argument, because one of the things that Sean pointed out is that if that's really the argument, then the appropriate venue for that is a variance application. That's not what's happening here. They're changing the zone. That's a big deal. There's a drastic difference between R12 and R6A. It's a drastic difference, and then down the line, there is no restriction of what they can do in the R6 zone. The, the argument today is, oh, it's, it's for affordable housing. But when those buildings go down, you can build something else. R6A is drastically different and drastically changes the nature of the community. You've heard, you know, that there's only a fraction of people here that were at that Community Board 11 meeting, there were about 300 people there. The community is against this. This is not a variance, it's a zone change, ill-advised, it's a bad idea, please vote against it.
All right. Elliot Sochi.
As a result of previous testimony, I've modified over fifty percent of my testimony.
Can't you?
Okay. The first issue is the accident rate and the cameras. Prior to the video, discussed how the cameras have contributed to the accident rate on that corner. The cameras were put there to reduce the accident rate that previously existed, and his implication that maybe those cameras should be removed is insane.
Well, it's easily found out.
Well, I'll give you some piece of data.
Let us ask DOT. Either way, when everybody's removing, try to look at cameras.
I know that. In 2008, in a 13-month period, there was $1.3 million in summonses written on that corner. I'm trying to get updated data on that. Senior citizens. Representatives of the applicants have made heartwarming stories about, real stories in most cases, about senior citizens. The applicant has not made any commitment to provide any senior citizen facilities. He has shown us two buildings, which has been unknown not to be the final intent of his plan. We don't know what he's going to do. Another point about senior citizens is, without being totally politically correct, most of the Douglasston representatives here are senior citizens, and the vast majority of them are opposed to this rezoning in spite of all the comments about senior citizens. Previous variance, I'll try this particular sentence, so I'm going to repeat it. In 2008, a variance represented a responsible determination by DSA that a three-story apartment building is a judicious decision for a maximum size building at a location under discussion, not the six-story building that the applicant was pursuing. Parking is different than anything referred so far. Across, directly across the street from the location being discussed, there are 14 stores across the street, these stores need parking to remain viable. Approximately, some number, four, five, six, of these stores have resorted to curbside service, in which a customer calls ahead to make a purchase at the curb while double parked. The proposed rezoning would increase congestion and reduce the limited existing parking, thus placing the merchants at greater risk to remain viable. Most of these stores are hanging by a thread. Precedent, you heard everything? You asked for, you asked your staff for examples of what might happen next. I'll give you two.
Now, what I asked was how many lots there were that are on 12, that are in danger of being built up that are now vacant, but I do think that we're going to look over the whole area, the on 12 zones that are built also that could be knocked down through Zell River. We'll look at, review it.
I'll just name them. The former Staples site, the former North Shore Hardware site, the CVS site, as soon as the lease is expired, is of all candidates for a spot zone again. The Burger King building on East Bay side is already being planned for a multi-story now. DOT help, I have requested help of DOT to provide a left turn signal at the corner of this apartment. No response, which I take as a negative. He would help, he would reduce another cost for us, who would help to track that. Many of the previous speakers for the applicants were employees of organizations that would profit from construction. These are people obviously for the proposal. Most of the residents that are speaking are against it.
So, we need to wrap up, but I appreciate it. I do think that we should, I mean, no matter what happens here, we should DOT look at it. I don't know whether there's been an application of DOT in the last 18 months, we should, you know, repeat their studies, but we're happy to ask them to do it again. I mean, regardless of this, this purely traffic issue here that needs to be dealt with. Dennis Demetropoulos?
Yeah. Dennis Demetropoulos, I'm against the project. Just a, a lot of people have said a lot of things, and most of them I agreed to before again. A couple of things, one is, as a layperson, it seems to me the rezoning is going to have a lot of impact in the future for Douglasston and perhaps other areas. So far, to me, it doesn't seem like enough attention has been paid. The developer previously said that no president is created because of this. This is precisely the case, a president is created, okay, because of the rezoning. So, I do not know how much I can request that attention is paid to the impact of future, of the future for the, because of the rezoning. Secondly, my personal experience with the traffic situation. My wife and I drive our grandkids to ESPN gear, we cross Northern Boulevard. My wife refuses to drive, I only drive, she refuses to cross Northern Boulevard. She walks all over, but she refuses to walk Northern Boulevard. That's because there's a danger in there. So, you put it over perhaps, what do you do? Okay? A lot of attention has to be paid to that, but please pay attention to the rezoning, it's important.
Do you want to ask the, do you want to ask? I do. Steve, Senator Cory, can you just answer a few questions? So I can just get my ducks in the room. The buildings, how many buildings are there now, number three, 61?
Three.
That are part of this rezon?
Three.
So there's three buildings, there's six stories.
I believe one, two are six stories and one is seven.
Okay. And I assume City Planning wanted to conform the block, or is that your idea?
When you do, when you do a rezoning, you have to look at an entire area. You don't look at the entire area of the block. And because there are three legal but non-compliant buildings here, when you look...
Sorry, I apologize, I'm using the wrong term.
And we make an application, the goal is not to benefit just one property owner, to benefit more than one property owner, and so we looked at the block and we felt that the proposal was sound, because it helps bring those buildings into compliance. It allows those buildings, you know, should they need to take out a loan...
Right.
It helps them, it helps them finance the buildings, it just brings them into compliance. So that's the reason why they're, why they're included.
What's the names of those buildings? For, for the record, what are the names of those buildings?
The names of the buildings?
We know?
I don't have the specific, I apologize.
So, I assume that City Planning wanted it so it wasn't a spot zone, right? So then the whole block needs to comply?
Well, we always try not to do a spot zoning.
It's not.
But City Planning is here as well, but we didn't, you know, we were the applicant, so we proposed that this area be rezoned.
Okay, the building is itself, they're marketing for the seniors. Are there any distinctions between apartments that are senior and are not?
No.
For the same?
Our goal is to market all the units to those that are 55 and older, meaning...
But the way you develop the units, are there any distinctions in how you develop units, like requirements by law? I'm just curious, like...
Well, all the units would have to comply with the building code and then have to be handicapped accessible.
They have to be handic, every unit has to be handicapped accessible in order to market...
Correct. And if there's additional things that a particular resident may need in their particular unit, we'd be able to provide that, and that's why we have Panic advising us on what, what seniors or what people at certain age levels need. This is going to be a very well thought out process.
I understand you have these, like, they have the bars in the bathrooms and things like that.
Correct.
Showers are normally walking and not stepping.
Correct, correct. We'd like to make it as, since it is intended that all units could be rented to what we would consider a senior, we'd like to make all the units senior friendly to make sure that they're equipped with the resources that a senior would need.
And how are you going to market?
The parking will be operated by a 24-hour valet.
For everyone?
For everyone.
Do people in the building get first, is it right to our states?
Absolutely. It's required by law.
Look, I appreciate everyone's coming in, I know that a lot of you have work that you skipped, I understand that, and even if you're not skipping work, there's a lot of other places you'd probably rather be. And so I appreciate the passion from the community and all of the testimony today. And I think there's no other business? No other speakers? This item is closed, thank you very much. I give you a few minutes for you guys to go if you'd like to go, unless you want to hear the testimony to other items. Thank you.
The Douglasston people, one o'clock in front, one o'clock in front.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm giving you the opportunity to switch out, but if you can do that, there's people that have been waiting to testify for one time on other items. So thank you very much, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Is part of that petition, a change of schedule, is that what you're getting about?
Alex, I'm sorry.
It's my wife's side of the table. So this is my other side. Actually, it was, you know, the analyst. He has another thing coming.
Yeah, yeah, I had one last night. Thank you.
Yeah.
In front of the buildings?
Okay, it's for, it's one, it's one store. It's one small guy. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go make sure they get in. I'm going downstairs, I think. All right, hold on a minute. Out, I'm going to go make sure they get in, okay?
And, and as you, and as you say, we're just, 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 we're
We are asking to extend the term, renew the term for seventy-seven forty Hewlett Street. It expired in July of this year. There are no real changes proposed. There's some minor rearranging of parking to allow for closer handicap accessibility. We are asking that the sales office area, which they have sort of turned into a convenience store, sales office area, be officially recognized as a convenience store. It's three hundred and twenty-one square feet. There are, we're proposing to prosen the dumpster area, which was supposed to have been enclosed before, but never was, but we will see to it. There's a minor change in the islands. The islands are where they are, but they're, the way the concrete, the green columns, there were some structural issues, I guess, when they did their candidacy. So there's a minor, we're just documenting as the condition that is done in combination with the previous DSA. There is an issue of the signage. There, it's sort of a quasi-corner. And it's, Nassau is on the other side and this is it, Queens Nassau Hoarder. And so, when you turn the corner, it's like, it's like Phil, Hewlett Street, Hewlett Street turns, there's a wedge and then there's Union Turnpike. So it's kind of like, it's kind of not really a corner, but a corner. The DSA previously had allowed them to have an overage of lit signage of ninety-six square feet. They actually ended up at, there's one more BP logo, so now they're, we're asking to maintain that overage and that we would just, it would now be hundred and, hundred point eight square feet of lit signage because it is sort of a corner and kind of blocks that way. Other than that, but those are the main, there's no change to the rest of the building. Auto repair remains as it is.
All right. Beaver vote thirty-six to zero. You're upgrading the pumps, is that my understanding?
Um, no, the pumps are already upgraded.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody need speakers? Item's closed. Thank you. Thank you for waiting. You know it's a while.
Calendar item number eight, DSA number four nine one two BP. The applicant, Powerhouse Gym, F L V Inc., effective community board number eleven.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Frank Saint Jacques from Ackerman, representing the applicant. This is a PC special permit application.
Oh, no. Who's, who's, which item are you?
It's for, I'm sorry, did you say for Powerhouse Gym?
Yes. There are two Powerhouse Gyms.
Yeah, thirty-three Northern Boulevard.
It's on the same number?
No, 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 no.
No, it's not.
This is thirty-three Northern Boulevard.
This is thirty-four oh nine Francis Lewis Boulevard.
Francis Lewis Boulevard. Who's is that?
I apologize. I'm thirty-three.
Okay, so you're next. Sir.
Sorry about that.
Huh? You said, it's his, it's his street. Your address.
There is a thirty thirty. He's up, like it's on there before me, so I don't know who was the same.
Did I make a mistake?
It's on the same, number eight, I think.
Say your address.
Thirty-four oh nine Francis Lewis Boulevard.
Okay, you're next. Go ahead.
Okay. Because he's thirty-three, it's up on the list before me. But thank you everybody for coming today.
Thank you.
I was waiting for it. My physical culture permit is a permit that you need to run a gym. It's something that is required, but kind of not, but so eleven years ago, I bought a gym and there was two owners there. I bought in and then they left, the permit lapsed. So I bought them out and then we had hired counsel and she was going to tell us, okay, a year before, let's reapply because it's every ten years. And it was, and honestly, we didn't know that it lapsed. And due to a hardship to hire an attorney to do a physical culture permit is very expensive. So we did, we're doing it on our own. It's almost done, but it was a lapse. So what I'm asking for is, you know, to go ahead and, and get my physical culture permit so I can operate. It's just been that twenty-one years. I owned the last eleven.
And you had a physical culture permit already once, right?
Yes. And it lapsed. It expired.
And then it expired June of two thousand seventeen. So I see.
It takes quite some time. It takes quite some time for us to do it, but it was like over a twenty thousand dollar expense that we, you know, due to the hardship we just couldn't.
No. Any questions? Those speakers are closed.
No, this is I.
Oh. What is this?
This is my speaker.
One speaker.
All right.
Henry, can you please come to the board, please?
All right. Henry Uller.
It's me.
It's to you again.
I'm here again. My name is Henry Uller. I'm first vice president of the Orvendale Improvement Association. We are supportive of this application. I'm also a member of Queens Community Board eleven. They are applying for extension of term of the special permit, a term of ten years with no changes to the site or hours of operation. We have no objections to this. Previous grant was only for five years. It had been at one point a drug issue there. Didn't have anything to do with the operator, like somebody was selling drugs or something. And so, when, when that case came up five years ago, or six years ago, we said, let's only do it for a five year time because we were worried about that. So since that time, there's been no other problems with drugs that we, we know of. The business is clean, it's well run, and it's a pleasure to come to say only positive things about an application. There was, there was one complaint filed about some kind of an odor coming out of the building, but when the Department of Buildings went to inspect, there was nothing there that they could see. There was also a little issue about a boiler inspection, but apparently that's been resolved as well. I know Queens Community Board eleven approved the application unanimously and my civic has no problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the history and your true benefits of having community board members that have served for a long time. I appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to make a correction for the record.
So the previous item that was heard was calendar item number eight, DSA number four nine one two BP. The applicant, Powerhouse Gym, F L V Inc., effective community board number eleven. It was one... And say your address. I'm sorry. Address specifically is thirty-four dash zero nine Francis Lewis Boulevard.
Right?
Thirty-four oh nine.
Okay, thank you. The item is closed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have one more.
Hi. Calendar item number seven, DSA number two zero one eight five nine BP. The applicant is Ackerman LLP, effective community board number one, thirty dash thirty Northern Boulevard.
Great, thank you. Again, Frank Saint Jacques, Ackerman LLP for the applicant. As you know, this is a PC special permit in community board one. It's approximately eight four hundred square foot gym on the operating, it's Powerhouse Gym on the ground floor, building in thirty thirty Northern Boulevard. We appeared before community board one and received a recommendation for approval, vote thirty-one to zero. Happy to give you any further details.
Send your extension. You're not changing anything, right?
This, this is a new application.
Oh, it's a new application.
And we're requesting the...
Oh, you're legalizing it with the physical culture establishment permit.
That's correct. They opened earlier this year.
So the question is how you operated without permit for the length of time. Why wouldn't you do it for him?
The owner applicant was decided to open prior to getting the DSA special permit because the process takes some time. So this application was filed. The short answer is that the, the pressure to open caused the applicant to open prior to obtain the special permit due to the pressure. This is a relatively...
Oh, okay. Was it a contract with the powerhouse? Does the powerhouse contract, like say in the contract, do you have to open immediately when you sign the contract or?
Their, their commercial lease or...
Is it a franchise?
It is a, they're licenses. So I guess it's, it's a, it's a franchise location. So I'm not sure if they're receiving pressure from corporate or it was just that it was a lot of these stories.
Okay. I assume the applicant realizes when they open another gym, they should probably get the permit first.
We definitely advise them of that. Typically, what happens in the event that the DSA approves this application, they would reduce the, the term by any time that they're open prior to obtain it.
Okay. Any other questions? No speakers? Item's closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If this was when the duty control opened, you'd be...
All right, so we have one more application for the demapping for the one hundred sixteen precinct by the Department of Transportation, I assume on behalf of the L I P D. They are not here, so we will lay over the items to next.
Thank you so much. Take care. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, we will determine our outcome after this meeting. Right now, we are going to close the hearing. The next Land Use Committee hearing is December sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you for the run. Hearing is closed. Want a shot? Put it out on the toilet. Thank you, thank you.
Brad M P putting F on the against card.
That was my idea. That was so funny, the address. I was like, they're all thirties, it's like physical establishment, because I'm reading and scanning to what it is. I'm like, what am I...
In past hand, it's like two people. And then you never let the applicant's...
Only, only staff.
So what happened here?
Because we were in the meeting and I came back here and it was like...
Okay. Okay, so I should remember to remind Lori to not let people go in there. Is that, that little gate, right?
Oh, I don't know. They probably came in and just walked up.
I think it was just like free for all.
It honestly was like a lot of cameras at the same time.
The applicant was sitting in right there. Like next to this. Yeah. But there was that one of the testifiers who was sitting here the whole time.
So, yeah, that was your seat.
My seat was just like on the staff first.
No, I put somebody on staff the next evening.
Yeah. A big part of that was because of staff. Yeah. It was kind of set up.